Let me call to order the September 4, 2024 Committee of the Whole Council Meeting. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's okay. The mic on?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to start this evening with recognition, point of our councilors. And let me go over here. A few years ago, we embarked on a new adventure for this town. And we agreed that we were going to sponsor additional education for our councilors and the management team here in the borough of Pottstown. Now, we wanted to streamline our operation and make us more usable, more user-friendly. We also created an Efficient Methods Committee. That was to look at the internal operation and to make that more streamlined, more efficient, and also to question those who use our services to see how we could help them have an easier time working with the borough. We also signed up our councilors and staff to what's called Lean Six Sigma Training. And this is a training course to teach people how to run more efficiently personally in their business and their endeavors. Well, we're thrilled tonight to announce a significant achievement within our organization. Please join us in congratulating Council Vice President, President Donald Lebedinsky for earning his Lean Six Sigma Black Belt Certification.
He's not even wearing the right color.
No, I know, right?
Now, when I said we started this Efficient Methods Committee, it's Don who accepted the chairmanship and has been leading in us in this for the last few years. And yes, it has paid off. They're streamlining within departments, they're streamlining among multiple departments, and they're streamlining in customer service. So Don and his group take on different challenges month to month and see what we can do, whether it's large or just a small tweaking, to make us one step better each day. So, you made it. You're a black belt. And this esteemed certification represents a high level of expertise in process improvement and operational excellence. Through rigorous training and a demonstrated commitment to excellence, Vice President Lebedinsky has mastered the principles of Lean Six Sigma and has proven their ability to, his ability to lead complex projects that drive substantial value and efficiency. His dedication to continuous improvement, exceptional problem-solving skills, and leadership in applying Lean Six Sigma methodologies will undoubtedly contribute to our ongoing success and innovation. His accomplishment is not just a personal milestone, but a testament to his dedication to our organization's mission of excellence. Please extend your congratulations to Vice President Lebedinsky for this remarkable achievement. We look forward to seeing the continued impact of his expertise in our projects and initiatives. Congratulations, Don.
Thank you.
That's a hell of a thing. Was it worth all the effort?
It was worth all the effort. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to form this committee. Work forward to all of our training, and it's not just me, it's in-house also as well. We installed a training regimen with four different levels. We had a white belt, there's four different belts, there's a white, a yellow, a green, and a black belt. Last year, our training regimen started out with white, yellow, and green. I got my green last year through this company, or company, through this borough and through these people. We were able to create some initiatives and streamline a lot of our LNI ways of working. This year, I took it upon myself to finish that and move to the next level. Believe me, it's a big surprise because I only mentioned this maybe one time to you guys, but since Dan is in the same profession essentially as I am, he understood it and he took the ball around with it. This is an absolute surprise to me, but thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Under Subcommittee Reports, Emergency Services. Chief Hand?
How about my report writing for next week? There was an issue with...
Understood. Infrastructure, Councilor Lebedinsky.
Um, it's in your packet.
We have that, all right. Transportation, Councilor Proskol.
There's not a meeting, but I believe we'll be meeting this month.
All right. And Ordinance Review, sir?
We've discussed a number of things, probably the most interesting is the frequency of commercial trash pickups, and then residential outdoor cameras, and scooters and e-bikes.
Good. Ordinance Review. It's you.
Economics. With the ordinance. Proskol.
No, Ordinance Review. We just, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Economic Development. I'm still worked up for Don.
I see.
Good evening, councilors. So, I've been down the social media rabbit hole lately, and that's not a good place to be.
Yeah, stay away.
I know. Right, stay away from it, I know, Councilor Lindsey. But it, because I was copied on something that had to do with, we're not business friendly. And I know that as part of leadership, we all need to take the initiative. We are never going to make everybody happy, and people are going to hold their beliefs, but I do believe that we do have a responsibility to do our best to educate the public. So, tonight's comments about economic development are going to be about educating the public. The latest has been a, I guess, champion of how great Boyer Town is and how great building a better Boyer Town is. And so, let me just give you some information about building a better Boyer Town and do some things that are different from Paid. So, Building a Better Boyer Town has been around since 2006. Paid is about ready to celebrate its 60th anniversary next year. In December 2017, BB&amp;B was the recipient of $1 million, I'm, I'm sorry, BBB, Building a Better Boyer Town, from BB&amp;T specifically to go towards downtown revitalization. It doesn't even include all their downtown, it is a specific geographic region in the revitalization. That money was largely in part because BB&amp;T acquired the former National Penn Bank, which was the bank of Boyer Town. They have a specific geographic boundary, and Boyer Town's borough has approximately 4,300 people as opposed to 23,000 in the borough of Pottstown. By the way, I was just looking up statistics, Phoenixville only has 18,000 people in it. They are supported through memberships, which are approximately $60 annually to all of the businesses that are within their geographic region, sounds like a bid to me. And they have two large-scale events that they raise money strictly for themselves. It is not money for the businesses, it is money for themselves. And they sell swag, which I have some lovely swag here that we're happy to sell you. $25 for the t-shirt gives you a contribution to Paid, or $20 for a lovely umbrella. We have a hard time getting people to support us from those things. So, Paid does have an open line of communication with their executive director. Building a Better Boyer Town is doing a fantastic job. They're doing the best they can with what they have. It is not apples to apples. There is also a chamber-like organization, which is the Berksmont Business Supported Membership, which for their members, they do specific marketing. So, let's talk a little bit about downtown and what we are doing, Paid is doing. Paid also has the 5.5 miles of the borough. Justin and I were just at an event last week to a business that has made a $40 million investment in the structure of their building. That means they're not going anywhere. They're going to be here for a long time. They're not going to be going in six months. I know the storefronts are exciting and they're important, but we also have to remember what other things we're getting. Lots of permitting fees with that job that came directly to the borough that can go back into the infrastructure of the borough. So, let's talk a little bit about downtown. There is a program called Main Street Matters, which the governor has funded to the tune of $72 million, which sounds like a lot of money, but that's for the entire Commonwealth. And so, what we are looking to do is get a Main Street designation. Danette has already signed up for those programming. Paid has made a $2,000 investment already in becoming a member of the National Main Street America, as well as some educational opportunities, which will hopefully open up other opportunities for our downtown. But there are certain things that for things to be successful, you need. You need a paid program, professional manager that knows what they're doing. You need to know what work needs to be done, who's going to do that work, how will they be paid? And we need baseline data. A lot of the data that we get, and I think Justin can attest to this, Zach can attest to this, is just, it's pocketed everywhere, but we need to make sure that we have data that we are, that is driving the decisions. So, we're doing data-informed decision-making about what types of businesses are here and how we can support them, what type of infrastructure is needed, and when we want to go into what directions we want to go into. There has to be an adequate budget for a downtown program. For a town this size, it is said that the operating budget for one year should be between $60,000 and $100,000 a year, just for the downtown. So, these are the things that we're looking at. Paid is supported as a 501(c)(3). We are grateful for the investment that the borough has made in Paid, but we also are very grateful to those investors and organizations that honestly don't get a lot from Paid, but they write checks and they support the organization, which allows us to continue our work for all 5.5 miles of the borough, which increases the tax base, which then goes back to the improvements of the borough. We do have an event, Fed on Blanc, this Friday. We've partnered with Hobart's Run. It is a very labor-intensive event. We do it because it markets the borough. Forty-six percent of the attendees are coming from outside the borough. It's gotten a great reputation outside there. We're happy that the community wants to attend, but we also want to show Pottstown in that great light. And you know what? When people come here, they say, wow, what a great place. People are saying, in other towns, we should be like Pottstown. What's going on there? So, I just want to say that I appreciate, and I know all of you, I'm preaching to the choir, but I'm hoping some people on PCTV and some people that heard these statistics tonight and understand this will go back and have conversations with their neighbors and their colleagues and their businesses to really get the reality and the education out there. Again, we're not going to change everybody's minds, but I think it's important that we're talking about facts rather than just opinion. We showcase the businesses in, to the outside audience. So, the vendors on site this year will be Sly Fox, Artillery Brewing, Kiki Vodka Spirit Express Truck, Donut Envy will be there. And if you haven't gotten your white outfit, you might want to check out Once Upon a Time, which has beautiful white outfits in the windows. So, that's really everything I wanted to share with you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions. Again, we would be happy. So many people come to Paid and say, what can you do for us? Well, I'm here to say, we need the community to help us too, and to support initiatives like the Better City for Pets, and to give a small donation, whatever you can give, and wear your t-shirts proudly. So, that's my pitch for economic development in the borough of Pottstown.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while you're here...
And while I'm here.
Land Bank.
Land Bank. So, we, Paid is also the Land Bank Administrator. And as I believe I shared last month, the Land Bank has acquired 633 Walnut Street. The, the house has been left in very poor condition, and it has a hoard situation in it that we have recommended to the board that they have it cleaned out before we open it up for tours, and that's what we're in the process of scheduling. And that's my report for Land Bank. Thank you.
Human Relations, Ms. Levin.
Aw, look at you with your cute little scooter.
Ooh.
Doing what I'm supposed to do.
Don had one of those.
He did.
Get one, let's have some races.
Got rid of mine a long time ago. What, five years maybe?
Good evening, councilors. Council President, National Hispanic Heritage Month is from September 15 to October 15. This is the time to celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic Americans. Specifically, those ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And Pottstown CCLU will be holding its annual Latin Festival on Saturday, September 14, 2024, from 12 to 5 at Riverfront Park. We encourage the public to attend this free event. And also, the Commission's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 10, at 6:00 PM in Council Chambers. The Commission plans to finalize the Black History and Women's History Month recognition for 2025, and all are welcome to attend. Okay?
Very good.
Boo, I'm out of here.
Zoom. Okay, and from the library?
Yes, so we've informed, there is a new director there, and they will start reporting next month.
Okay. Ricketts Community Center has reported. Anything to add, Councilor Kirk?
It's in your packet, it's also online.
Okay. And the Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsey?
Sorry.
Nothing to add. And from our solicitor, Mr. Hovey, what do you have for us?
Yes, at the last Ordinance Review Committee meeting, the councilors who were there asked if at some point we could review the borough's noise ordinance, you know, for the benefit of council and the public who's watching here tonight. A copy of your, your noise ordinance was at your place this evening. Generally, in terms of noise ordinances, there's two ways to structure it, and there's positives and negatives to each. The one would be an objective standard, and that's going to be an ordinance that's based on decibel levels. What's good about that is it takes the guesswork out of whether or not someone has violated the noise ordinance. The downside of it is that it requires specially calibrated equipment and someone qualified to use it to typically be on-site to actually measure the decibel levels. The second type would be a reasonable person standard, and that's what your ordinance is. So, your ordinance isn't based on decibel levels, but rather prohibits conduct which would essentially offend the sensibilities of a reasonable person. The ordinance defines that as any noise which endangers or would endanger is likely to endanger the safety or health of humans or animals. Any noise that annoys, would annoy, or is likely to annoy or disturbs, would disturb, or is likely to disturb a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities. Any noise which endangers would endanger, or is likely to endanger or injure a person or real property. Any noise which disturbs the peace, or any noise which would create a nuisance. Essentially, then, anything that is loud enough to really bother people would be in violation of the ordinance. The ordinance then goes on, though, to identify specific conduct which would meet that standard. And that's on page two of what I gave you. I won't go through all of it, but some of them to highlight as clear examples of what would violate that reasonable standard would be if someone allowed an animal to make noise continuously for a period of 15 or more minutes, or make noise intermittently for a period of 30 or more minutes. It would be operating a vehicle, machinery, appliance, equipment, or hand tool which would emit noise beyond the boundary of the property between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Another example would be operating, playing, permitting the operation of playing of any radio, television, stereo, musical instrument, sound amplifier, or similar device which creates, reproduces, or amplifies sounds as to create a noise disturbance, or more specifically is plainly audible at a distance of at least 20 feet from the source, if it's a motor vehicle or hand-carried radio or boombox or whatever it is, speaker. The ordinance does include some exemptions from that standard. Specifically, it's going to be any type of noise related to an emergency event, or it's going to be events authorized by council, such as festivals, fireworks, and other similar events. As far as enforcement, it's similar to all of, a lot of, a lot of what we've talked about as far as your ordinances. In order for there to be a violation, a police officer, a code enforcement officer is going to have to witness the conduct, or a credible witness is going to have to have witnessed it and be willing to testify in court, or there's going to have to be some other evidence such as a recording of the event. Ultimately, based on, with a reasonable person standard, the ultimate decider of whether or not there's been a violation is going to be the district justice. So, while all of us in this room potentially could agree that certain conduct violates the ordinance, it's going to be the judge who makes that ultimate decision. That's the 10,000-foot overview. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Matt, technically, in Part D, anybody who locks their vehicle and has the horn go off is technically in violation?
If it's during those hours, correct. Between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM, except for an emergency situation. So, an emergency situation would be if someone's actually trying to break into the car and legitimately going off.
No, no, I get that. What you're saying is it says the use of an automobile horn. I mean, technically, you can have somebody sit out there and go, I'm going to watch my neighbor come home and take video of him locking his car.
Correct.
So, technically, that would be a violation?
Potentially.
I mean, I, I get certain circumstances, that's kind of, that's kind of funny.
Yeah, I mean, part of it too, I mean, keep in mind, you know, this ordinance is back from 2009, some things have changed, I think the intent of it or people, you know, you, you know, you pull up at 6:00 in the morning and honk the horn to let the kids know to come out.
Yeah, yeah, and like you said, it's ultimately up to the judge anyway, so...
Correct.
That's a reasonable use, because if you're walking away from your car and you just take your button, by word technically, it says that you're in violation.
Right. Yeah, and the judge will decide whether there's a violation and what the fine should be if there is.
Thanks, Matt. Apart from trash, I think I deal with more complaints than anything else in my world I live. I'm actually known well at the county dispatch as Noise Complaint Ryan for calling in it so often. Eventually, they get it, sometimes.
Anything else? Thank you, Matt. Mayor will report Monday, some other time. So, from our manager, Mr. Keller.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, tonight I have a couple items to go over, and I have an update first off on the CDBG Stormwater Project. So, this is Phase One and Two of our stormwater project. It's a roughly $400,000 project to replace stormwater inlets in certain neighborhoods where sump pump discharge onto the roadways causing degradation of the roadway surface. So, the completion of this project will help to preserve our, our roadways for a longer period of time, and that project has now begun. Work is currently taking place on Gray Street, and there are Phase One and Phase Two is what we're considering this project to be. It'll include the installation of six inlets and piping in one area, and then Phase Two, which is also a part of this, this first project, will be installation of nine inlets and piping in four problem locations throughout the borough. So, this is just the beginning of a multi-year stormwater improvement plan for the, for the borough. Overall, we plan to install 39 inlets in total, and in addition to the CDBG grant, we were fortunate to come to the agreement last year with the Borough Authority to contribute $50,000 a year towards stormwater improvement, so that is also helping to fund this effort as, as well. Just a note, the Parks and Recreation Newsletter is now posted onto the website, so there you'll find important information about park facilities, recreational programming, project updates, and much, much more. So, please go onto our website and check out our letter. Also, you'll notice some new Signal Box murals going up. Recently, a mural depicting sunflowers was completed at the intersection of Wilson and Hanover with funds that were helped secured through Park. This was done by artist Ashley Kulpak, and two more Signal Box projects are currently in process. Also, an update from Park, they used some of their funding, arts funding, to complete a vignette mural on the Korean War Memorial located on Veterans Island in Memorial Park. So, the full set of vignettes will be recognized at the Veterans Community Ceremony on September 28th, once the scope is completed there. So, all would be welcome to attend that as well. And lastly, one other Parks update, there was a comprehensive update of the signage throughout Memorial Park. We haven't updated the signage in that park for quite some time, and it is a heavily-used park for not just recreation, but also big events like the volleyball rumble. So, you'll get a nice, fresh look on, on, on the park sign facilities there. And lastly, I just wanted to give an update on the status of the Halloween Parade. So, at the August meeting, we announced that there had been no community organizations that have stepped forward to run the event. And I just wanted to provide everyone with a little bit of historical background on the Halloween Parade, which unfortunately, over the years, has suffered due to several factors that are somewhat beyond our control. First of which included significant security concerns that jeopardized the safety of our police officers and our staff when it was held during the evenings. This was several years ago. That situation compelled the borough to move the parade to daytime on a Saturday. However, since Halloween's not a federal holiday, most businesses were open during the daytime parade, which led to... which led to considerable pushback from the downtown merchants about parking and delivery access when they were already dealing with road closures for, you know, events like the Red Horse Car Show, which I think everybody appreciates, but it's another Saturday of the month that kind of takes them offline. In response to those concerns, we then attempted to hold the parade on a Sunday. But by that time, interest had weaned considerably, and many participants were not available on a Sunday to walk in the parade or to have a band play in the parade. And really, throughout our experience, what we have found is that parades tend to be most successful in the borough when scheduled during the day of a federal holiday, as the impact on business is minimized and participation is high. You can just look at the July Fourth or Memorial Day parades to see how successful they are. Moreover, the borough depends on external organizations to manage events of this scale. We don't run the July Fourth or the Memorial Day Parade. We partner with other entities to help run those. And that's really due to the extensive coordination and preparation required in the preceding months to get ready for those events. Currently, our park staff simply does not have the capacity or the budget to handle such events like the Halloween Parade on a short notice, especially without the lead of a third-party organizer. As always, we're always more than happy to help and willing to assist, but from our perspective, these events need to be planned at least six months in advance and should involve a dedicated organization capable of generating sufficient volunteer and marketing support for a successful outcome. Lastly, we would just say that if funding does become available for the parade and a community organization is willing to run it, it would be more prudent to allocate it towards next year's parade. The turnaround time to hold the parade at this juncture is simply too short to effectively organize and execute the necessary marketing, engaging in the sign-up of the participants, and most importantly, the volunteers. You know, a lot of these events, like the Fourth of July Memorial Day Parade, wouldn't be able to happen in a cost-effective manner without a good volume of volunteers. I know that last year, NAACP made a donation and attempted to, and did organize the parade. It was kind of at the last minute, like we are in now, which, you know, we're very thankful for their effort, and I see that Johnny's here, and I do want to thank them for that effort. But through no fault of their own, it resulted in a noticeable decline in the quality and the number of participants that participated last year. And it's staff's opinion that if the community's going to invest significant time and funds into a street closure, the event should reflect that effort by being well-planned, impactful, and impactful, rather than something that feels hastily put together. While staff is willing to move forward, however, council decides, it's very important to keep in mind that a poorly-executed event can actually harm the town's image instead of benefiting it. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Traffic calming, street murals. What have you got for us?
Ooh, nice.
Good evening, Beth Dash. I live on the two-hundred block of Walnut Street, and we have cars that speed down our block. It's from, the block is between Charlotte Street and Hanover Street, and I don't know why they need to go so fast between those two streets, but they seem to need to go like forty miles an hour. We have cars parked on either side. It's a one-way. I think if you go to the next slide, who is, I don't. Okay, great. Can you go? Yeah, so the problem is that they're speeding down the street. It's a one-way street. It's a residential neighborhood. Both sides are parked, and it's between Hanover and Charlotte Street. We've discussed this as a neighborhood, you know, our block, a lot. Ron Williams is across the street from us, and we are, you know, back and forth about what can we do? Speed bump, that kind of thing. None of those things seem to be, you know, acceptable. I think if you go to the next one, too. So, I kind of did some research, and I found out about this three-D painting that is used to kind of just make people think they need to slow down because there's something there. And so, I applied for a grant through the Love Your Block. You're familiar with that program? And they said, "Go for it." And so, I'm here just to present and say, "Hey, can we try to do this?" The idea is, too, that we would have it painted. There's fifteen hundred dollars available for the initial painting, and then the neighborhood has agreed to, if it's successful, that we would, you know, keep up with it. If you go to the next slide, you'll see pictures of the ones. And the one that I particularly like is if you look at the upper right-hand corner, it kind of actually looks like there's a speed bump, even though there's not a speed bump. It's just the way it's painted. And I think that that might be the most effective one to use, making people think that, "Oh, I need to slow down because there's something I need to go over." My husband and I were looking at the block. It's a block that's divided by Penn Street also. And so, we thought it needs to be, you know, about a quarter to a third of the way in from Charlotte so that, you know, they don't get going really fast. They are slowed down before and then just continue on. So, that's my presentation. I'd like to be able to say, "Hey, can we do this? Is it something we can move forward with?" And then also, the other thought is, there's all kinds of construction up that way, and I don't know what the plan is for that block of Walnut Street. Is it going to be torn up? You know, all the construction that's going on up there. So, we wouldn't want to do it before unless, you know, it's going to be a long time down the road. So, I don't know those kinds of things. So, there you go. I don't know. Do you ask questions at this point, or do I answer things?
Yeah.
We ask.
Any questions?
I do. I have one.
Yeah.
A few, maybe. I like this idea. The only thing I can think of is that if it's outsiders, like Zoom, and then they probably come here every blue moon. But if it's somebody, like if I lived down the street, I'm like, "Oh, that's just a fake bump, the speed bump." Or, "Remember, when you come to my house, it's going to be a fake speed bump. Don't worry about it. Just keep on going fast." But that's what I'm saying, because that's, because we get complacent. We remember, "Ah, remember the little art project they put in the middle of the street?" They ain't going to think about me. I'm thinking about myself. I can't speak for nobody else. But that's, I mean, I probably would do something like that. Like, I would be like, "Girl, just going down the street. That's the, don't worry about it. You've just been drinking too much wine."
Yeah, if you had them going down as, I mean, they really do go quite fast, and I, yeah, I don't know why they need to go that fast.
Yeah, no, they laughing at me because I said the wine part. It was the wine.
Well, anyway, that's.
So, but my thing, I like this. But if it's like, you know, I'm coming to visit, and I'm like, "Whoa." And me, I'm, you know, as long as I, if I ain't have my glasses on, I'mma stop.
Stop.
Yeah, I'mma look at it, pay attention.
Yeah.
Now, does it glow in the dark, like nighttime?
I don't know that it glows in the dark, no. I don't know that we want it to glow in the dark, actually. That wasn't a.
Well, if they can't see it at night. I'm a speeder. I'm a night speeder. No, I'm not, chief.
I mean, I would think the lights would somewhat pick it up, too, because, you know, when there are things on the road, your lights.
Your lights, your headlights.
Your lights will hit it.
Hmm.
Yeah, you use a reflective paint.
Yeah, you could, anyway, so there.
Yeah, I like those. I remember the big crater example that you gave me.
Well, I did, yeah. I didn't think.
I could sue for it, but I like it.
The best one to give, yeah, as an example. There was one where there was like a big, you know, dug up. The road was dug up, and you looked like.
Yeah.
Really.
You'd be like, "Ah!" Oh, that's fake.
It was fake.
We already have plenty of those naturally. But we're working on getting them off.
They already tearing up the streets.
Yeah, anyway.
Because I like it. It was cute. I liked it.
You know, is there any construction planned for that area?
We could look into it. We would want to definitely make sure, you know, if council would approve it, we could talk to Ms. Dash about the timing, make sure that if there's any construction that we know about, to try to avoid it. My only thought.
I mean, if they're going to put in any water pipes or anything, that should be done first.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so we would, yeah, we can check that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Line striping bid, is that's in?
Yes, that is in, but I think we have skipped one.
Okay, so that bid's in. Okay.
Did you do twelve? Oh, you did.
Memoration request for Chief James Rogers.
Oh, you want me to talk? Okay, so, remember, we had the presentation a while back? So, I am on a group chat with fellow WIN ladies, and WIN is Women in NAACP. And I was, you know, because, you know, I get all my good ideas while I'm on the bus. So, I was driving, and I said, "You know what? What else can we?" Because everybody don't see the council meeting or anything like that. So, I said, "Well, how about if we get a street, get a street name like the Armanos? Can we get something like that?" So, I text Justin, like I always do, and he gave me the suggestion and said, "I think that would be a good idea." So, I said, "Okay," so I text Dan, and but first, I asked Annette. I was like, "Annette went and did the research for me. She found the street, the street name, I mean, the street address and everything, and I asked the ladies on our group chat, text, and they was like, "Yeah, that sounded like a good idea. It sounded like a good idea." So, I want to thank my WIN ladies for helping me with the idea and getting all the information, especially, and that she's our WIN leader. So, she went out, while she was working, and she went and got the street, the crossing street names, and then I went, after I got off from work, like one-thirty in the morning, I went down through there. And I sent the information to Alexa, and that's about it. So, we just got to do the rest of the stuff. But I thought it would be nice to have a street name tapped around, you know, so we can see it, so.
And which street did you have in mind?
I sent it to you guys. What was the name of the street, Annette? Grant Street.
Yeah, so Chief Rogers lived at five forty-eight Grant Street, so that's the block between Morris and Jefferson. So, we don't actually, as I explained to Councilor Lindsay, we don't actually change the name of the street, but for individuals that have made a significant contribution to the borough and its history, we would commemorate a street.
Yes.
The reason why we don't change the name of the street is because there's a lot of time and expense, not just for us, but the property owners and business owners, if you have to change your actual address. So, we keep the street name above it. We put, you know, commemorated to Chief Rogers, or however you want to, however you want to say that. And we already have the design that is the standard for the borough that we did for Armando Way.
Yes, mm-hmm.
You could look at it there, or potentially, if you wanted. It's kind of a convenient two-block stretch if you would go from Jackson to Jefferson. That would be kind of the whole stretch of the neighborhood where you lived, too. That would be another option.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Now, onto the line striping, line striping, Aviation Fuel, and South Street Park.
Yes. Line striping, we went out for bid twice on that. We didn't get any responses, so now we're permitted to seek quotes from outside of the bidding process. On Aviation Fuel, we didn't receive any bids there. We'll be going out for that again. And on the South Street Park bid award, this is for playground and park improvements, and we expect to have a recommendation for Monday night.
Okay, list that for Monday. Sixteen, is the Ricketts Center lease extension.
Yes, so, attached to your agenda tonight is a request from Boyertown Multi Service. They're requesting a five-year extension on their current lease of the Ricketts Center building to run the youth and community programming. That would take us to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine. They're also requesting a continuation of the current annual payments from Pottstown Borough to Boyertown Area Multi Service in the amount of fifty thousand in twenty-twenty-five and twenty-six. That is what we are currently contributing in twenty-twenty-four. However, they would like to increase that by five thousand dollars in the subsequent years, providing fifty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-seven, sixty thousand in twenty-twenty-eight, and sixty-five thousand in twenty-twenty-nine. From staff's standpoint, or from administration's standpoint, we would be hard-pressed to be able to find an organization or run the center ourself for sixty-five thousand dollars a year, even at the high end in twenty-twenty-nine. Likely, our costs would be triple or even quadruple that.
Questions? All right, list that for Monday.
So, potential action would be to ask the, or have the solicitor prepare an agreement with Boyertown Multi Service. That would be your action, potentially.
Very good. I'm Tony Green.
Yes, last year, you leased with Maria Hernandez for her to operate the concession stand down at Manatani Green. That lease agreement is set to expire at the end of this month. Park and Rec has recommended the continuation of that lease. So, in your packet is a renewal of the lease agreement that would run for another two years, concluding September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. There's only minor modifications between the current agreement and the new proposed agreement. It would increase the rent from four thousand eight hundred dollars a year to four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, and also clarifies that the tenant would be responsible for any repairs or damage as a result of their misuse.
Okay. Questions? All right, list that one. And the PBA Borough Sewer System Lease.
In your packet is a proposed lease agreement between the borough and the authority. The current lease agreement expired in November of two thousand twenty-one. This new agreement would be for a twenty-year term. It leases the sewer system to the borough, which allows the borough to operate it. It is, the current one has been streamlined a lot since the prior version. The prior version was about forty pages. They have it down to about twenty-two, in large part because since the time of the last agreement, the authority has paid off its debt and is debt-free. So, those provisions have been simplified in the agreement, but are still allowed for if they need to take on debt in the future for the system, they can. It's also consistent with the sewer service treatment agreements with the townships and PA American Water, as well as the two thousand eleven sewer system agreement. I know it's a really dense agreement, so please feel free between now and Monday night. If you have any questions, to email Chuck and I, and we'd be happy to get your answers.
Okay. Questions? Anyone? All right, we'll list that for Monday. And local pollutant limits.
Yeah, I'll take that one. So, the EPA has come out with new guidelines on the current limits with respect to total cyanide. So, currently, the total cyanide limit is two-point-one-nine milligrams per liter. The proposed limit by the EPA, or I should say, the enacted limit for EPA for total cyanide is one-point-two-eight milligrams per liter. There were no other changes with the pollutants in the current ordinance. However, the borough would be mandated to adopt the new limits in addition to the three contributing townships to the wastewater treatment plan. We currently have reviewed these limits with our plant staff, and we're assured that we have no issues whatsoever meeting the new reduced requirements.
Good. Okay, questions on this? All right, and list it Monday to go ahead with it. All right.
So, we would be authorizing the solicitor to move forward with the operation of the ordinance.
Police pension, the MMO.
Yes, we've got both of our MMOs in Item twenty and twenty-one. So, the police MMO has increased by two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to two million fifty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The non-uniform pension plan has increased one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to total one million ninety-eight thousand and twenty-four dollars.
Right. And these increases are smaller than they could have been, except we went to averaging.
Yes, that's correct. Several months ago, both the Police Pension Board and the Nonuniform Pension Board moved to an asset smoothing model, which basically bases our contribution on the average of the market value over five years.
Questions? All right, list those for Monday. Street closure request for Ride for the River. Street closure request for Ride for the River.
Yes, so that's coming in again from Skoko Greenway, September 28th, 8:30 to 2:00 PM. It would be a closure of College Drive from Hanover to High and then monitor traffic from College Drive to High Street to Keystone Boulevard.
Okay. Questions on this? Okay, we'll list that. 23 is the street closure request for the Community Block Party, National Night Out, Make-up Day.
Yes, this is the make-up day, as you indicated, September 19th, 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM. This will be North Washington Street between Chestnut and Rowan Alley.
Okay. Good with everyone? We'll list that one. Upcoming board vacancies, EAC has one three-year term to expire August 10th. Human Relations has one four-year term to expire October 11th, 2024, and one four-year term to expire November 11th, 2024. ARB has one five-year term to expire April 1, 2027, and we're looking for applicants for those. And now, from those citizens who are present, any comments?
Yes, so just a reminder, everyone will have a maximum of five minutes to speak. And first up, we have Kelly Fenstermacher, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing the Edgewood Cemetery this evening and I'm here to invite you out October the 5th, which is our fall cleanup day. We are at the cemetery cleaning up between 10 and 2. Our large project this year will be clearing the bank of Kyne Street for traffic and also for making it look a little nicer. During this time, we are going to offer something new. We are offering free history tours to the public, so please come out and join us and you can learn all about the Edgewood Cemetery. They will start at the top of each hour, so at 10, 11, 12, and 1. You will get a walking tour of the cemetery and also bring your questions. We want it to be very interactive, so if you have questions, please bring them with you. Also, too, if you're looking for the interment, we'll have our master interment list there as well. Then October the 19th is our fundraiser for fall. We are having the third in our Walk to Remember series. It is the infamous at Edgewood. So we're going to ask you to come out. That is our fundraiser. You can get tickets on our Facebook page. Tickets are $20 for adults, students are 10, and that will be at noon, 1, and 2, and if I sell out, we'll have a 3. But it's a great way to come out and hear about the stories at the cemetery. This year, we are featuring the 2024 Murder Suicide at the YMCA. We are interest, we are also doing Haunted Pottstown in the Middle, so we have a storyteller there. We'll tell you nice spooky stories from downtown Pottstown. And at the very end, we have our Hungarian Love Triangle. So you get to come out. If you're a true crime junkie, I do recommend, and you'll get to hear from the participants and you could just figure out who's actually telling the truth. So I welcome everyone to come out and thank you for your time.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, councilors.
Actually, we have one more.
Oh, you do?
Yep. Sorry about that.
Already on my feet, so you've got to let me.
Yeah.
No, no.
Next up, we have Doug.
Good evening, everyone. My only comments are actually about my happy comment tonight. We had a major cleanup at the encampment down on College Drive. We took out a 40-yard dumpster and we also had a donation of a 10-yard dump trailer that an individual brought and he paid for it personally to take it to the dump. So I'd just like to give a quick shout-out to the folks who participated. Pottstown Beacon of Hope, Better Days Ahead, and the Deviators from Bally were the principal organizers. Wawa gave us lunch. Whitetail Disposal gave us the dumpster. And there were two gentlemen who brought equipment. Sean Linville, who has a business here in town called Living Fences, Living Fences, let me say that a little clearer, he brought a tractor and a trailer and really was a huge help. And Kenny Klein, who has a company called 828 Construction in North Coventry, he had the dumpster and he's the guy who paid like around $100 to take it to the dump. So I also, while I had the people power down there, we cleaned up Montgomery College, the drive, College Drive, that's what I'm looking for. So we used the blue, purple, the purple bags and we cleaned up the whole area, went down on the sides and everything. And the reporting online to have the pickup worked smoothly, seamlessly, but for some reason, somebody came, I was down there today, somebody came and took the purple bags before Waste Management got there. Somebody was a good Samaritan, I guess, and took the bags before we even got there. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
And that concludes public comment.
Councilor Kirkland, any comments?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Councilor Lacy?
Nothing. I mean, I have something, he didn't have anything. So I've done a couple of things, but Joe Cerisi had a free fruit and veggies giveaway a couple Saturdays ago. I want to give a shout-out to Ashley for creating that beautiful sunflower in my ward. I feel like that's the best one because it just makes my ward feel so sunflower-y. I mean, it kind of like represents me, that sunflower child. So thank you, Ashley, for bringing that to the fourth ward and doing such a fabulous, amazing job with that. So I just want to give you a shout-out. The alley had an arts and craft show that was last Saturday, I think. And of course, the car show Friday, Saturday, and Sunday was, like, just watching the cars on High Street in, in containers. That was really cool. I took a picture of that. I had to take a picture of that, like, that was cool. And Sunday, it was a nice day, it was hot, but it wasn't too hot and it was so many people. I had to stop at the alley and get me one of those little peach fudzy drinks thing because I was thirsty and I was tired. So, but anyway, it was nice. It was a nice little event and I seen on Facebook that Gonsalves had 10K visitors, like, people came there. I'm, I'm sure they had a lot of people come there. Let's see, I think that's it for me.
Vice President Libardinsky, anything?
Yeah, I got some very positive feedback on the Lowe's show this weekend, this past weekend. Because of it being an import show as opposed to a domestic car show, I've had people at my work come up to me and compliment on the way it was run and how everybody conducted themselves. So congratulations to Pottstown for running it and Jamie for actually being the coordinator of the whole thing. And thanks again, everybody, for surprising me with that little kudos.
You ordered. Councilor Prosser.
I'm happy to report that my boys are back in school. And then for teacher night, I saw that the NAACP was handing out books. We got a book on Robins, interesting. And actually, over the summer, I, my wife had different jobs, she wasn't able to watch them. So I enrolled them in the Fun Geneering Camp at Srestre South Cafe and they had a lot of fun there, as well as our, our Parks and Rec camp as well. They did a lot of fun things like go to the zoo and the pool. So I appreciate Andy Graham running that for us. And of course, the Lowe's show was fantastic. I would think the winners of the contents, contest were from France. And I ended up sitting next to them at, at Radigan's.
Oh, yeah.
And then, so I went over, introduced myself and, you know, thanked them for coming into, you know, and not, you know, the United States and brought Pottstown as well. And then I told them I went to, you know, Paris when I was 17 and they're, and then they just kind of looked at me and said, "Quah!" They had no idea what I was saying. I gave them a thumbs up and, yeah, thanks again to Jamie for such a great show.
Good. Councilor Banny, you on the line?
I'm not a mayor.
No one? Okay.
Well, the mayor looked like she unmuted herself.
Oh, I just, I wanted to say I don't have anything, but thank you.
Okay. Next time. I don't know what else to say. I mean, you all talked about the car shows this past weekend. We've become number one for volleyball. And if this continues anymore, I think we can become number one for car shows. What a town. You're all doing well. I'm nothing more, no executive meeting tonight, so meeting adjourned.